Yeah, okay, so yeah, I think we can go ahead and probably start. I don't want him to miss too much like saying meeting day is one of the first things I wanted to do, which
You know.
Have.
May not let this with their person in?
Yes, I think go ahead and do that, and then we'll get started in a couple of things.
I bet he's not very long.
Yeah, hopefully not. Okay. All right, so we're gonna go ahead and get started. Welcome all, which at this point is is one attendee. Thank you. So if there is anyone who would like to address the board, the procedure is to, at the bottom of your screen, hit whatever it is that that is the the Zoom equivalent of raising your hand, and that will pop a notification up to to us, and then you'll have a few minutes to address the board. So there's no name with the person who's attending, but if you would like to address the board, let us know now, or we will move on to the content of our meeting. Okay, let's go ahead. The first thing I'm gonna ask, so in the agenda that we have, I don't have them numbered here, but there's the discussion of the sort of snapshot of growth, which may also be called snapshot of changes. We haven't talked about that. I would like to move that to the very end of the meeting, so to make sure that we have time to talk about the forward and the timing and format going forward for public information and public hearings, because if that part doesn't get to, that's okay, because I actually won't write it for about another few days. I have blocked out some time next week. So if that's okay with everybody, I would like to move that to the end of the meeting.
Sure.
All right.
I also ask if it's possible for the Samsung phone to enter a name? So we know who you are? Okay.
All right, interesting. Nice job, Catherine.
I'm now hyper vigilant. I'm like totally freaked out.
Well, I think it's good, and you know, obviously, there was a a password, but they, as long as they had the town link, they could get in, or I don't know how else or what they did. That was interesting, yeah.
Good job.
Yeah.
You'll be our gatekeeper.
We're very blessed to have you with us.
Feel very blessed.
You could always be our gatekeeper.
Yeah. All right, so I'm gonna, I have a few things I wanted to start off that aren't on the agenda, just because I didn't think of them until I was typing up notes. But the first one doesn't really require Charles probably, though we can get there. So Janice Burton, the prime, many of you know, and she sent a privilege of the floor to the town board yesterday. But she also included me in a note in which she said she had a few thoughts for the document about businesses that maybe should be banned from the town. And she said, when would that sort of be appropriate? You know, it could conceivably feed into zoning decisions or whatever. So I just wrote back saying, you know, I'm not, you should either give us some information now as we're drafting, or it also would be appropriate as comments at a public hearing. And I'm sort of leaning towards the latter, because we're in sort of what I hope is the home stretch, and I would like to just sort of finish that. So what are your guys' thoughts on that?
I think that's a better way to do it is public media, because it's difficult to, I mean, there, otherwise, there might be a lot of redundancy, but it's also difficult to know exactly what one means, but banning businesses.
Well, I think she has a specific list, and that was her point. She wanted to send us a list.
Wow.
Like, yeah, no, yeah. Well, so so for background, this is generated by apparently something going on on Thomas Road. Tim, again, probably heard about this last night, because something about Thomas Road.
I know all about it.
Doing a lot of fill up on the hill, and she doesn't know what they're doing, but that guy are thinking about like dumps and stuff like that, and she thought, well, if it doesn't say that somewhere, maybe we ought to officially ban certain kinds of businesses like dumps. I have some other ideas in mind. How do I share them with you? So that's that's the whole genesis of this thing, so.
We do have dump language and the, there is dump. I don't know what you call it, laws in town.
Right.
Yeah, that one, that one maybe, and that's the way that one may be handled. You know, I don't know what all is on her list, but I will, I will suggest that, you know, when we're into public hearing time, that that's what she should do.
What she really wants to do is ban certain kinds of individuals from living in town.
No, she does not.
I mean, we all generate garbage last I checked, so.
But this.
Not too well managed dump.
This particular, this particular property is a dump.
It is.
And he has, if you look at it on an aerial zoom, I've looked at this Google, he must have ten trailers up there. And he has, what he's done is he systematically built this bizarre mountain right on the side of the road.
Yeah, I saw that.
And it could collapse, and as I can tell, but I think apparently, according to the code officer, it's technically not illegal. Blah, 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 blah. So it's.
It's not a business, right? And it's not like this person's.
No, I think he's probably a hoarder, but he's a hoarder. He uses trailers to hoard your stuff, unlike my former across the street hoarder, who just left it in the yard. And but then occasionally, when stuff would get bad, some kind of out trailer outbuilding would appear, and then the shit would go in the trailer, and it's just part of the process.
No, you know, we've got hoarders around here. He's, that one on Thomas Road is potentially more concerning, but again, not to us, but to someone, I hope.
It's a problem.
Because, because of the proximity to a wetland and other stuff, I don't, you know, I think it's not, it might be big enough to qualify as a DEC, as a EPA regulated wetland, I'm not sure.
I think, I think that there's action being taken, so.
Okay, good. That's, that's what I want to hear. And presumably, that's being, oh. Uh-oh, can you guys hear me?
Yes.
I, it tells me I was signed out.
No.
Okay, but I'm still here.
Yeah, you are.
All right, good. That was odd. All right, well, did you, okay, let's admit Charles, and then we'll get going here. Good. Okay, so Charles, while you were rebooting, are you there hearing us yet? Let's see, oh, we had to unmute him too.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm just still getting my headphones out and everything.
No worries. And Val, you're muted. Did that on purpose? Give me a thumbs up if you're muted on purpose. Okay. No worries. Okay, so Charles, while you were rebooting, we just decide, I'm pushing the snapshot of growth discussion to the end of the meeting, because it's one of the things I want to make sure we get to. So that was the only thing that was really done in your absence. Other than basically, because of one particular request suggesting that additional comment at this point to the board, which of course can be submitted anytime via email, but really be coming as the public hearings on the comp plan, rather than inviting anyone in to just talk with us in the intro. Okay, so a couple of things. First, a general comment, and I think sort of Tim mentioned this our last meeting. I felt to some extent, we got a little too hung up on how would you do that sort of thinking when we were discussing the comp plan? And just a reminder that it is sort of a vision document. I think it is important to keep it grounded and realistic, and so, you know, to that extent, that is all good. So I'm realizing to some extent, the value of what, they had little 20-year vision pieces at the end of each section last time, and not necessarily suggesting we reinstall those, but I did see that that's a place where you could sort of say, gee, wouldn't it be nice if the town was like X 20 years from now, without sounding too Pollyanna-ish? But anyway, in what we discussed later on, I definitely have tried to do some research on, hey, what's really possible for the town to do? Because I want to keep this grounded in reality. But just want to remind us that it is certainly okay for us to sort of say, gee, this is a good goal to strive for, even if we don't know, and actually probably shouldn't specify the exact route to get there, because, you know, who knows? Other two more things. Sort of homework between now and our next meeting is to sort of, because of that idea of vision, just sort of read through everything we've got so far, and make sure it's got enough of that sort of like vision sentiment in it, because that was, in the end, one of the strengths of the existing comp plan, and I think we've done that, but I want to be sure. Because things came up that they didn't anticipate, but the vision helped cover that. And like even with this proposed retail development on Route 79, it was all kind of language in the plan that didn't talk specifically about a development on Route 79, but that was relevant in terms of the sense of the town. And so I think it's important that we have enough of that there. And so just, you know, one last read through to to look for that. Having said that, I also do wonder whether we should have some language specifically about the Route 79 corridor. And some time ago, Val, I think you had brought this up at a meeting, maybe a year or more ago. You know, the confluence of Route 79 and all the traffic, and therefore the tendency for commercial development, with that also being one of the valleys with some of the remaining good agricultural land. And as we brought up at the moratorium hearings, that that's kind of like one of the big entries into the town. That's what people see. So as you think over the plan one last time, I want us to think of, that my suggestion, think a bit about, do we need to do something? You know, bring that language out, that concept forward, that this is a particularly important thing, because it's got all these pressures on it, yet it's important.
And I, in that context, also mentioned to you, just a reminder, which I've mentioned before, that that this, that the, that the western portion of that corridor is heavily residential.
Yes, you might know that.
Right, but they're, but they're very well-maintained residences, except for one.
All right. Next meeting date. So when do you guys want to meet again? Again, we've been doing three weeks, and that might work again. We're getting down there. Again, I have a little bit to write. I think Val has a little bit to write, but we're getting down to the end. And we may need to set this date after we talk about the overall timetable, but what do you guys want? Do you want to try to set a date now, or wait till we talk more about what remains to be done in public hearings?
I could do either.
Okay, I've seen a nod from Charles, probably a nod from Catherine, or is that just chewing? Okay, so when do you guys want to meet? Do you think we should try for three weeks, be the end of June, or should we go for four weeks, early July?
Either one is fine with me, especially Mondays or Wednesdays, but.
I would encourage three weeks, if it's at all possible for everybody to keep this
Yeah.
moving along.
Okay. That's good with me. So what is that, what week is that? Someone who's facilitated?
That would be the 24th.
Yeah, we could have 21st, 22nd, so 22nd is a Monday.
Right.
Okay. Or the 24th would be Wednesday, because you said Monday or Wednesday. Good for you, right, Val?
Yeah.
So which would you guys? Someone propose a date?
Wednesday.
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 Wednesday 24th?
Okay.
Very good. Okay, 6:00 PM for you, Val. That's still the best time?
Yep.
Okay.
Do we, could, we don't have any conflicts with other groups?
There's nothing else on the calendar right now.
Yeah, I don't think, you know, I think anybody is Wednesday.
Catherine, just so you know.
All right, thanks, Charles, for checking that. Okay.
What are you saying?
You were muted. It looked like you were talking, so I didn't know if you were talking to us.
She's muted so she could argue with her, you know, husband, right, so. All right.
I'm debating internally, actually, whether we, Dol asked, and if he doesn't give me his name, that's what I decided. So I asked Dol asked what his name was, and then I haven't received the Yeah.
Oh, you.
Didn't want to interrupt the meeting, but here we are.
Okay, cool. I didn't even notice that. Thank you guys for paying. That's why I sound so busy doing this stuff. I appreciate that you guys are taking care of that kind of stuff. Okay, so first topic. All right, first topic on the agenda is housing affordability. And we had a bit of discussion about that already. I apologize for one thing. I didn't look at the numbers, Charles' most recent note carefully, until just a little while ago. And I think part of the issue is I'm not sure where we were interpreting or doing the math right. So.
Fair enough.
So very, so you, we have households with a mortgage, and the unaffordable is 33%. And households without a mortgage, the rate is 11%. And if I'm thinking about this right, the right thing to do is not to add those two together, because it, it basically is a weighted average. If there's a lot of households with a mortgage and just a few without a mortgage, basically, you're gonna have a 33% unaffordable rate, because the others don't matter much. And it's the other way around. If there's a lot of households with, without a mortgage, but only a couple with a mortgage, then you're gonna basically be down at the 11% level, because all the houses are without a mortgage. So I ran the numbers, I convinced myself I was right, and so the number, you know, I did like 100 with a mortgage, 11 without a mortgage, and then 100 without a mortgage, and, you know, and it works out that the numbers can be somewhere between 11 and 33%. So it wants it being a weighted average of those two numbers, so it's not 44%, which is still bad, but not as dire as that was making it sound.
Great.
So with that, my suggestion is to go ahead, I mean, Charles, do you remember if in that housing data, it will tell you how many households have a mortgage and how many don't?
Yeah, if I can just pull it up on my computer here, is just have a, having an issue, because all the files are on the computer that froze. So I'm trying to access them. I have it, I have the document. Just give me like five minutes.
No, so if we have those numbers, then we can create the proper weighted average, and all I, what I suggest is go ahead and put that in with language that has the caveat that there are big error bars on this, as you pointed out, because the American Community Survey data.
But, so, I mean, that's the thing, I mean, if we're gonna talk about error bars at all in the text, if we're gonna bring it up for this thing, right, what is our cutoff for a big error bar? And when are we gonna bring it up through the text every time that we're talking about something? You know, that's what I'm saying about a policy about it, like, if we're including a number, we're bringing up, it's got a big margin of error. And it seems like we're incumbent on doing that for every time it's above some amount, and then it's like, well, you know, it certainly doesn't make it easier to read. I can definitely say that from that kind of language. So it's just sort of like, I'm just looking for, I guess, not quite a vote or anything, but just sort of input from anybody else dealing with this issue. I wish I could pull it up right now, if I can.
Yeah. So I mean, you have a note at the beginning saying, all these numbers come from the 2017 American Community Survey, right? We sort of, that's a little header to that section.
Yep.
And I would suggest we could add something saying there that, you know, I don't know, like, because I don't know if all of them have bigger, you know, just that, you know, there's some caution, and, you know, better numbers will be available once the 2020 census day is available. Something like that, what other people think, but I just, so that we might suggest, at least speaking for that one in particular, sort of say, this should be looked at particularly given likely impacts of COVID-19 once we have better data in the near future, or something, you know, I don't know, because I think it raises caution, a flag, but it may not be that it's all that much higher than it was in the last reading, which was, I think, 20-some percent, do you recall?
I think it was like 18, but again, like, we don't have any information on what the error was in that particular document either. And so it's just sort of like, it could have been 18 plus or minus 11% or something again, which it just makes it hard to know. That's all. So that's what I'm sort of searching for right now.
Okay, other folks, what are your thoughts?
Well, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure what the information will tell us completely, because it is, it is tricky. The error situation is, I mean, each one of those three criteria could be 25% according to the error, error information. I mean, what is it, what is the bottom line that we're trying to get to here? It has to do with notions of affordability, right?
Right, and in part because one of the 20-year visions in the original plan was that everyone has nice, affordable place to live, right? That's a very laudable goal. They went into the housing affordability question, so Charles had sort of brought that along with newer numbers. You know, it's not a huge section, but I think that rural poverty is a significant factor issue in Caroline. So I don't want to sort of, I don't know, I don't think dropping is necessarily the right idea either, just because that would be sort of like we're turning a blind eye to something, but.
Right, no, it was, it was important in the last survey too. I mean, they had some data on this thing. I mean, the thing is that that everything changes economically, though, because there are times when there are a lot of mortgages among, you know, high-end individuals, right, because they're trying to, they're, they, because of the economic situations, they're trying to trade up, or something like that.
Right.
Or they're putting, there's all of a sudden, a lot of people who have to put people through college, or things like that, right? All sorts of tuition situations can affect it. So it's, it's sort of hard to tell. It's really, I think, a really very important part of, of the plan. I just don't know exactly what are the best matrix techniques to deal with that. I mean, because it does affect everything. It has to do with, because it's, I think they, they did use the word nice in there. I mean, what is nice housing? It's tough to say, and then what is, you know, and affordable goes beyond just the housing. It means to be able to have essentially enough disposable income afterwards, be able to buy the proper kind of food and all these other, other situations. So and unfortunately, I mean, that one, that one source seems as though they're not that great, but it's better than nothing, so.
Yeah.
That's my position.
Yeah.
Catherine, anything you want to add?
I'm looking at the documents over here.
Yeah.
Not really. I mean, I agree with Val that the, you know, the purpose behind the numbers is what's important to me, so I you know, I'm not sure what the metrics are, or what the data points are that we need, and I, you know, if we want to really blow the thing up, like, do we need them? You know, can we make a point about what everyone's sharing without them? The answer might be no. I mean, I, this is just not my area of expertise, so I don't know, but I worry a little bit about the number. Like, when I looked at the numbers, I was like, so what? You know, like, what is that? Like, I don't know that it really shows any particular narrative just by looking at those numbers, and so my editor brain is just like, well, then we don't need it in there, because if it's not contributing something important, then it doesn't need to be in there. But, yeah.
I mean, typically, a situation of affordable housing is linked to assistance. You know, you know, government assistance, loans, of these kinds of things that will benefit and compensate for, you know, people who below income, right? Whose incomes are below what could be sustained in that area. Theoretically, the housing in Caroline is, I suppose, on the average, more accessible in terms of prices than it would be in downtown Ithaca, for example. But, and certainly the New York City or something, places like that, so.
Like, but without having people's incomes, it doesn't really mean anything. It's just, you know, buy a house for whatever, you know, $100,000, let's just say, but if your income is you know, I just, I don't know that, I know that on its own, it means much.
Right. So I mean, that's why it's the housing affordability number, because that takes the cost of housing and the income into account, theoretically, with these error bars. And I'm, Catherine, I'm with you, you know, that's how, when I read the original plan, it's like, there's this number here, and I, without context, it didn't mean a whole lot to me. When it looked like that it doubled, then I was like, oh my God, you know, this is something pretty significant changing in the town. I think that's not going to want to be the case, but it looks like the trend is probably increasing, and so we don't have any real policy consequences. We don't say, oh, and so the town should do X to improve this. But it could be, we could make some comment about the trend, that would at least give it some relevance and context. But I get, I agree, absent a solution, that's all it is. Maybe that's good enough.
Right.
Yeah, the narrative, I think, is important, for sure.
I'm also wondering if the jump in assessments that happened two years ago doesn't somehow factor into this as well. I happen to, I mean, ours had jumped like 30% or something crazy, but.
Yeah, ours was crazy too.
But I think that happened across the town, because they did this major adjustment, and then that would also affect the the average cost per house.
Yeah, yeah. So that's a good point, and, you know, again, it could be part of the cautionary note of, let's wait a couple of years, let's just settle out, but that, I don't want to get people lost too much in the weeds, but you're right, you know, there's a lot of potential artificialness in the number, if it was just a consequence of a particular change two years ago, because that'd be just about right for the 2017 American Community Survey.
Yeah, so I think, I think one concrete thing is that number 44 is totally wrong. Those numbers were not assigned to be added together. That's my bad. That's what's prompting this conversation. So that's one thing we can all agree on, I think, and move forward with moving that out. The question is whether to replace it with anything substantial, whether to replace it at all, or whether to keep language in there that mirrors kind of the language, more or less, that was in, at the very least, mirrors the language that was in the initial comprehensive plan, where it's just saying housing affordability is an important part of, you know, a living, a livable, a community that's livable. And right now, this is what it is, and whatever that number winds up being, I can, I can say, you know, and that represents, you know, some change up or down from 2006, when the, you know, initial comprehensive, something like that, you know, so we can, we can really say there's a trend, you know, one way or another, it's, or it's a level, or something like that, and then maybe once that's written down, we can react to that again, the way you reacted to that number being really high. And that might give us a little bit more to work on in terms of community, like, talking about it more. So I feel like it, we're all sort of talking about it right now. Maybe we're not all focused on the same just blurb, you know?
Okay, I'm good with that. So, you know, see if we can get that number as real as it ever is, and, yeah, my guess is the narrative will be that it's gone up some, and so the language could be something on the lines of, this is concerning, and bears further looking into or something, you know, I mean, because again, we don't have solutions. The town can't really act vigorously in this area, other than try to help people find assistance programs or something, but.
Right, it would all be in the context of, like, affordable housing is necessary for it to be livable, if this trend can be used to go up. You know, this would, this would threaten livability for more people, and therefore is something that the town should look into ways to ameliorate, something like that.
Right.
Cool.
I'm good. You guys good? Okay. All right, next up is the trends in agricultural land use in Caroline, so again, as most of you guys know, but for the benefit of those tuning in, we've done some work, and I had somebody do some GAS analysis of what's been happening. The data is a data set. There are several data sets, one from 1995, one from 2007, and one from 2015. It was a survey of land use and land cover in the county, essentially, was done, and we've extracted just the Caroline part. In general, and this is well-known, this is commented on the previous plan, that there's been a overall decline, a continued decline, continual decline in the amount of land that is being used for agricultural purposes in the town. That also, I think, mirrors trends probably across upstate New York, is much bigger than Caroline. But in particular, from 1995 to 2007, there was about a 14% drop in the amount of acreage that was being used for agricultural purposes. And then from 2007 to 2015, there was another 8% drop. But digging deeper and looking at what that means, there are roughly, where are my final numbers here? 500 and some. Well, where's the number? Ah, 597 acres. Yeah, so there's, there were 597 acres that used to be agricultural in the 2007 data set that were not in 2015, but they were somewhat compensated by 124 acres that used to not be agricultural, and are now agricultural. In other words, some people sort of converted land back into farm, or could be farmed for the first time. Now, there are some, you know, weirdnesses in the, go ahead.
I was gonna say, my, we don't know that. So we're using the word ag. We don't actually know anything about farming, but just to be clear in language.
Yes, so, so, so again, they, I, of course, didn't do, so this is, this is called agriculture. There's two categories, agriculture, inactive agriculture. They have a bunch of subcategories, so the actual different types of agricultural practices on the land are known. I just don't have them up here, and I didn't, you know, list them all. It does include everything from cattle farming to crops to whatever. And so it could be broken out into whatever categories they used. We could break that out into those subcategories if we want to spend the money and time to do it. Karen could certainly do that. Actually, I have access to tales. I could probably do it. The wrinkle, just so you guys know, all the houses here, is that in 2015, the area of the roads was included in the land use of the adjacent land. In 2007, it wasn't. And that ones it being some hundreds of acres, which is big enough compared to the acreage change we're talking about, you really have to take care of it. And that's what Karen was able to do for me. She could cut some of that numbers out, so I don't know if I have access to all those numbers. So, yeah. Catherine, I don't know, you know, again, I think we could know what, at least they were categorized as, and if that's good enough information for what you're looking for.
Well, I guess my point is that a tax assessment, an ag tax assessment does not really connote reality of land use in any way.
This is not, this is not an ag tax assessment. This is, I don't know if it was which branch of Hopkins County government did this. They went out and took a look, either in aerial photos, or physically drove the land and designated, what is this land being used for? It is not the category of ag in the assessment database. It's a land use, land cover mapping of the town. So it's a very different critter. All right, with that, so there are about 600 acres that aren't being farmed anymore, but again, 125 got into farming. Just so you know, if there's a farmhouse and some land around it next to a cornfield, they call all of that ag. But if you then subdivide that and But if you then subdivide that and stop farming it, then the house and some area around it becomes residential and the remaining land becomes vegetative cover. So, you know, things get traded around from categories, not because a lot necessarily happens, but for certain reasons. But with all this background, what I then wanted to look at is, okay, there's a bunch of land no longer being farmed. Sort of trying to get at why that is, you know, what's happened to it. And my naive notion was that, oh, everyone's putting up houses on it. And the bottom line is while that is happening to some extent, that is not appear to be the main driver of why the land isn't being farmed anymore. Because of that acreage no longer being farmed, only about 20% of it is in a parcel of land that had a house put on it. In that same sort of since 2007. So I, that may be a clever way of saying it, but basically most of the land that is no longer being farmed from 2007 to 2015 is still just sitting there. No one's done anything to it. It's now just basically vegetative cover. And my takeaway from that is that if what was happening for why land wasn't being farmed anymore was that there's people wanting to build houses, they're running out there with cash in their hands and offering to farmer, let me put my house up there. Sure, great. Then, then almost everything that was being farmed anymore would have a house on it. The fact that it doesn't says something else is going on. And I checked this, I talked to Monica Roth, that Quark extension, and she said, yeah. Basically, when land isn't being farmed anymore, it's the main problems for farms in Caroline and upstate New York is lack of profitability. And then maybe they sell some off to help pay taxes. Or maybe it's just not worth farming anymore. Maybe they are selling it or hoping to sell it down the road. So that's really what's going on. As far as we can tell from these numbers. And that goes actively with a farmer I was talking to, and which is part of, started some of this, this harder thinking, who, who basically sort of said, yeah, I, you know, there's some land that I, you know, I had to sell because I had to pay taxes and it's hard to make money. So. Anyway, I just wanted to get your guys' take on that interpretation of the numbers that it seems right. And if so, that segues into the next conversation of, you know, is it farming or is it open space we're trying to preserve? And if, if it's farming and/or agriculture and the cause is lack of profitability, then we have to change the balance if we want to preserve agriculture as an activity in the town. So the balance of, of costs and, and whatever you call it, income. So that's where I'm going with this. Thoughts so far?
Well, the, the, the things that you were discussing about the idea, I mean, your, your initial supposition with housing and things, and then the fact that that's not happening and that land is going fallow, I think is all, is also a very important trend to be identifying. And it's, it's sort of a subsidiary of the idea of the agriculture, but it really goes to also though Catherine's idea that what is agriculture and farming and all these things are such a complex system now. You know, it's hard to tell. And there's so many mixed uses. I mean, a portion of eight acres of our property is, we give to somebody to hay twice a year. So, and, and so in a way it's farmed, but, and it's not going fallow, but in another way, it's, it's not that this is a farm, certainly. So.
I ideally, and I hope it is right, that eight acres winds up in the agricultural count for the land used land cover, because they should be able to tell it's a hay field, I hope.
I guess this is what I'm saying. Like I would really want to know what the, what the methods are for this, because I cannot imagine that this is accurate. I mean.
Right. Yeah. And part of the problem is that, that right now, many, it's hard to get people at various offices. So I, I, I think it's a good point. And I tried to find out who actually exactly did this, and I don't have the answer. And it might bear further looking at. Again, it's obviously some professional organizations best work at this, but it doesn't mean that it's accurate enough, if you get my drift.
Well, another question I would have is how much of, of Caroline has been in recent years turned over to things like the Kewland Trust?
We have that number. I don't have it in front of me. We have that. Now, I mean, I have how many easements there are, how many Fingerless Land Trust easements, the total acreage and easements we have. And again, it's, it's in the environmental protection section, but I don't know the number. It's, so what I can tell you, because this stuck with me, is that there's a lot of protected open space in Caroline. A lot of that has to do with the state forests. We have Schindig, we have Hammond Hill, we have Potato Hill, right? The second category after state forest of the biggest amount of conserved land in Caroline is now land trust easements. And that was not the case in 2006 or 2004. At that time, it was the Cornell natural areas. But there've been enough Fingerless Land Trust easements on land in Caroline that it's, you know, the second most important open space conservation tool.
Well, that's a pretty important trend. And also, but how much of that land, I just wonder, used to be agricultural? Or considered agricultural? We don't know.
I, I, yeah, I mean, uh, go ahead, Charles.
I was gonna say, it really kind of reminds me of when we were talking about local businesses and commercial entities in Caroline that the information we have access to is really imperfect and we know it's incomplete. And we know sometimes that not only is it incomplete, it's both incomplete and imperfect, sometimes about the same parcel. So, you know, this, this kind of speaks to, I think it's in, I think it's maybe in action if I remember, but like the idea that there would be a more in-depth agricultural survey effort for atlas-ing almost to follow this up. You know, because I don't think we're going to be able to get the perfect map, right? Or the perfect analysis now, but what we're doing is we're identifying like, in order to make decisions that reflect the needs of the town, having an accurate assessment of where the town is at is really important. And what we're learning is that maybe, you know, the town, the whole town would be better served by some sort of consistent effort over how, whatever it is, you know, it's just like the census gives us information that if we're going to be making decisions about the local economy, that we need to, that the town needs to take a systematic or the town needs to work with the county to do something more systematic where the baseline we're looking at, we can feel confident of measuring against. Because that's, I think it's a frustrating thing to kind of go around and around in circles on, because at the end of the day, we're not going to have that information. And it's similar to these numbers that I was talking about with the affordability. Like we don't necessarily know what to trust. And you don't want to like highlight something in this comprehensive plan that maybe has a, I mean, maybe you do, but it's like the margin of error around it really makes it hard to, to feel confident about what you're talking about, you know, and and that could just be the scientist in me. But it's also, I think, for planning a town, you want to probably have less than a 15%. You know, on a number that's 20, you want less than a 15%, you know, margin of error, basically. So I think that may be one outcome of what we're talking about is that we need to maybe approach this systematically.
Other comments on that in particular, before we move on to the segue, which is concepts of desirability of, or lack of desirability of providing additional financial support either for farming or open space. Say anything in particular on these housing numbers I was just spitting out?
Well, I guess my question is, where are those proposed to like go? For the, I mean, my, I think it's important also to say really like eye on the prize that like we need to get this plan done. Obviously done well, and I think we're doing it well, but I think these are really important conversations conceptually. And I also don't know that they need, as Charles is kind of alluding to, to be resolved for the purpose of like the plan. And so I, I would, don't understand fully. So I'm hoping you can help me better understand like the, the stuff that you've sent. Where would that even go? Is that part of a section of the plan? Where would that?
Sorry. And I almost titled it, the last piece. It is the last piece of data for what I've been calling snapshot of growth, which I think should probably be called snapshot of changes instead. Which is, that runs through like the housing growth and the, you know, business stuff and things. And one of those is what's been going on with, you know, land changes, land use changes. And so that's where we go. And it would be basically a paragraph in that. And again, I apologize. I've been busy looking at a bunch of different things. So I haven't gotten to the actual writing of that. You guys got the most of the outline a couple of weeks ago, and this is the last little piece to get inserted in that.
Got it. No, that's fine. Okay. That's helpful. So I guess knowing that then, I would say that the point about the percentage of land that's now in a conservation easement is very significant. You know, in terms of like possible policy around what's going on in Danby and all the things that we're going to talk about now. But that, that piece, like focusing on conservation is what I would argue for broadly.
Okay. I put a note to that and then, you know, right, and we'll see, you know, take feedback on, on the thing. Okay. So then various things got me thinking. And, you know, we had talked a year ago, two years ago, probably three years ago, about various options for providing additional financial support. You know, often for, for farming. And when we had the rural character workshop, that was one of the specific points that came out of that was, could we relieve, you know, farmers, however defined, from the burden of the fire tax or reduce their fire tax? And I was having a chat with a farmer recently. We guys got that email saying, why haven't you guys done anything? I said, well, we, often the town can't. And he and I talked about that idea of, he said, well, why couldn't you just use like, use like the ag assessment to evaluate the farm, sorry, the, the fire tax? I said, I don't know. So I promised to look into it. And with that in the back of my mind, I was listening to the moratorium debate conversation. And there were people saying things like, you know, don't ruin my view as I drive down Route 79. And what I'm thinking about is, well, yeah, that view, right, has been provided by those who have decided to do things like farming on the property instead of building commercial buildings. So would there be a way to tap into essentially put your money where you're about this? If we as residents of Caroline want to maintain rural character, or however we define that, some of that is open space, some of that is maybe farms. Are many of us willing to pay a little bit more money so that those doing those activities that give us rural character have to pay a little less? And that's been underscored by the fact that maybe the reason we're leaving farming is because they have a hard time making a profit at it. It might be that the right answer, given that this is a almost somewhat pseudo free market economy, kind of a little bit, is to say, okay, if it's not profitable enough, they should go out of business. But that would profoundly affect the character of the town. So the town could play a role in saying, no, we are going to interfere with the free market and say, we don't want to let the market push these places out of, out of business because it's important enough to us to skew things in a way to make it more likely that they won't go out of business. And that's a tax policy question, perhaps. And that's one of the, one of the ways to go. So here's what I know so far, and then I'll open up for discussion. First is, no, the simple question that this farmer asked me is, no, we can't simply say, we'll assess the fire tax at the ag assessment rate. The ag assessment is set up in state law, kind of fixed. That's why it's the $10,000 number, all those things. The town really can't touch that. So I do have a general question out to the association of towns as to what legal authority does the town have or not have to shift the property tax burden? What are the mechanisms? What could be done? It is, you know, could again, all of us pay a little bit more and then give some kind of break? Maybe it means that the $10,000 limit for ag assessment is to shift it to smaller farms. I don't know the right answer. And so I will try, hope to be hearing something back on that. I had some comments from Jay Franklin I wanted to share. His view is that the way the taxes are supposed to work in New York State is kind of like a little tripod chair, where you have a mixture of sales taxes, income taxes and property taxes, and that that mixture was hard for any one person to avoid. So, because like income taxes, if you shelter your assets properly, you can pay almost no income tax and be very wealthy. So he said, this is not supposed to work, but the problem is, of course, that things haven't been kept, you know, properly trued up. And what's happening is that more and more burden is falling on the property tax. And so part of my thinking is, is there a way to shift the burden from those who are land rich but income poor onto many of the rest of us who might be sort of land poor or medium rich, that have higher incomes? We can't really do an income tax. I'm not proposing that. But what to do? There are many programs, and I'm almost on a missed field, don't worry. There are many programs that do help farmers. Ag assessment is one. There's a farmer school tax credit. There's some deductions, you're going to have some tax breaks for having farm employees. I have my whole list here somewhere, a couple of others. For one reason or another, a lot of farms and farmers in Caroline don't qualify. And Charles is part of that assessment. I think one thing they should be looked at is, you know, I, we assume everyone's probably looked at these, but why is it that farms here often fall under the cracks these programs? Why don't they apply? Sometimes it's size limits, like income limits in terms of like gross sales limits or income limits that are the problem. And I think that's a question that bears looking into. Monica Roth does tell me that pretty much the farmers do know about these programs, that they, the Quark extension doesn't work to make sure that they're publicized. But also that a lot of it has to do with the accounting firm and a lot of them use a particular accounting firm that does know about them as well. So with any luck, the issue isn't lack of knowledge, but it might be a significant issue in lack of applicability. And so my question is, is there a role for the town to step in for the kinds of farms we actually have in Caroline? And yes, Catherine, the point is we have to define what does a farm mean, what does a farmer mean? But maybe we can do it at a local level that doesn't, you know, that's more appropriate for what's going on here. And then the last piece, as you alluded to Catherine, is, you know, one way that it is possible to do something like this is to pass a town level conservation easement program. Doing so requires a state law to enable the town to do that. There are four towns in New York that have done that. So my hunch is that that one's not necessarily a heavy lift. It might simply be, you have to make the request and then they will, you know, the, some person puts it in and they pass it, but the, whereas if you're trying to do something that really applied to the whole state, then it gets to be a big fight across all the towns and that, that probably wouldn't go. So that would be a possibility. And that kind of program is more likely to generally apply to those who are supporting open space as opposed to necessarily agriculture. I don't really know, but it seems a conservation season makes sense that way to me. And I think that's important. I mean, I myself have a bunch of property that we're keeping open. I wouldn't mind a tax break, but that's not really what I'm angling for. I'm wondering if there's something particular about agriculture or indeed, do we want to focus on open space as the core features of what to support for rural character in Caroline? So with that long spiel, what are people will think? And we had a bunch of discussion on email already, so. I do want to do anything. Again, it wouldn't be like, oh, we propose exactly this. It'd be more language of, you know, the town should explore all, you know, some options for additional tax breaks for, and it could be again, agriculture, it could be for those maintaining open space such as, you know, a town conservation easement or any other thing, you know?
I know somebody who would appreciate some language that can go in that direction. Not that it would necessarily get enacted, but I think that that there's some sensibility in the town to supporting ongoing agriculture and open space. You know, it's very complicated. So who knows what would end up happening, but this is a goal, not a
Yeah, I agree.
The, the, the main point is what you bring up, what can a town do? Because so much of this seems to be caught up into state legislation and, and regulations. I mean, even, I mean, if, that's why it'd be interesting. It's great. And I, you know, I congratulate you for trying to reach out to all these other towns. Good luck. And, but you know, the idea too, that, that maybe it just has to do with, with altering some of the criteria.
Yeah, we, and we, again, that's what we can't do. For example, for ag assessment, we can't alter the criteria, but we would have to do. So I don't really know yet what, what the town can do. That's what I'm trying to get some answers on. You know, going back to my note at the very beginning is, I don't want to promise something that is impossible to do, but we do at least know a conservation easement is possible. Catherine, go ahead.
Well, it just, I mean, do we all read the, are we familiar with the Danby thing that Bill and I are talking about? I just want to make sure that, like, we're all familiar with it. So that, they just had a meeting last night about this. I mean, this is not like something we would need to reinvent the wheel around. And I think it's very compelling. And there, there, the documents that Mark had sent, you know, talking about the rationale for this, this proposed law, I thought was so well done personally. And I mean, so I think it's worth exploring, again, in terms of like what the comprehensive plan would say. I, I think this could be like an action step, you know, action item.
Yeah. 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 I'm essentially proposing an action step to rural character. Yeah.
Again, and it's just. Yeah. And, but I mean, I think it also could and should be an action step in livability and environment and natural resources. livability and environment and natural resources in the spirit of having consistent messaging all, all throughout. Because an argument can be made, I think, in each of the three categories that this is important. I mean, people don't, you know, the idea of like what's ag and who's a farmer, I mean, that, those are like obviously complicated issues. But I think like what's not complicated is that like people care about what it looks like and feels like to drive around Caroline. And whether or not the field is hayed or sitting or has cows on it, I don't think most people generally in terms of like what they're seeing care. You know, so, so when we get into like the nitty gritty of like who's benefiting, if it's a dairy, like what are the things that that person could take advantage of? Like, that's important, but for the purposes of like comprehensive planning and the feel of a town and trying to preserve our vision and values and, you know, that's like, what is it feel like and look like and what's it going to be like to be in our town? And so to me, the overarching, less complicated concept is conserving, you know, I don't mean conserving in terms of traditional conservation even, I just mean like conserving and preserving our, our views. And one of the things that in the Danby document, they noted, which I thought was also important, is to say that people have to be willing to give up something in order to get something. So the idea is like, so let's say you are a farmer, you're a real farmer. In order to have, be the recipient of this proposed tax benefit, you still have to be willing to take your land, at least in part, and commit to keeping it open, you know, to keeping it undeveloped. And if you're not willing to do that, then that's fine, but then this doesn't apply to you. And so I think that that is a more of like an equalizer around like if Val wants to say that no one's going to develop on his eight acre hayfield and that acre, eight acre hayfield is within people's view and people want to like look at his nice hayfield, then everyone's like putting in a little more to be able to look at the nice hayfield, but it doesn't matter that Val's, you know, not a full-time crop farmer.
My guess is that the Finger Lakes Land Trust would not give an easement to a farm. Does anybody know that for a fact? I could be wrong.
I think they did. I believe that there was a case in the past couple of years where there was an easement given to a farm with some kind of agreement. I mean, maybe the easement was for a, a small parcel of it, but I'm pretty sure that happened.
Was it the Lounsbury?
Yeah. Well, was it, that was actually a farm easement, which is a different creature than a Finger Lakes Land Trust easement. So yeah, the Lounsbury farm had a farm easement put on it. And indeed, those farm easements come with the restriction that you keep farming, you're going to know all the details. And indeed, that's the whole point, again, with the Danby or, you know, similar conservation easements, is that the reason you're getting a tax break is that you are committing, you're giving away some development rights. And since you're being compensated for that, the other way to look at it is the land is worth less because it's no longer developable. And so therefore you get a tax break. I think
To me. Sorry.
It, it, one of the interesting wrinkles in the Danby thing is that they were considering like time limited easements. That is, you know, you'd get a different amount of break depending on how long, but if you only commit to five years or 15 years or in perpetuity, you could get a tax break in each case, but it would be, you know, smaller, medium and large. And that's an interesting thing because there may be some people who don't want to give away things in perpetuity, but are for a while, but then the town has to decide, okay, so how much is a little while worth to us? So that gets wrinkly too. But, so the reason I raised the question about Finger Lakes Land Trust, two-fold. One is, you know, what was this provide that the land trust doesn't already provide in terms of easement opportunities? Why would the town need to play a role here if it's already a Finger Lakes Land Trust? Or, no, there's other certain kinds of properties the land trust doesn't put conservation easements on that we could then do. That's one. The second is, there was a comment in the Danby thing that, oh, you don't get much of a tax break for the land trust. And I want to look into that because I had a friend who said that actually it was a substantial benefit to them to do that. So there had to be a reason why the town would step in on that, but there are certain things that are nice about it. In that regard, sorry, go on.
No, I just, I, I may hear you, I agree. I, I also think that, again, conceptually, like for me, it's dividing what is part of the public good in far, as far as like comprehensive planning, what benefits everyone, which is the point of like, you know, vision. We can all decide that we want to or don't want to like support agriculture, just like we can decide we're going to support or not any other enterprise, right? But the what's part of the public good in terms of making an argument that rural character, open space, view sheds, green, you know, habitat, wildlife, like all these arguments, like if we're going to make a public good, health and wellbeing argument, then that's to me more of a a sell in terms of comprehensive planning, then I'm going to decide to do something in particular to help a farmer, which unfortunately, the reality is, I think, all of these programs, the reason my farms are still going out of business is because no, no amount of programs of this type are going to compensate for like national farm policy and, you know, trends. Right? So if, if we're going to go out of business, they're going to go out of business, no matter how, you know, if they have a fire tax in Caroline or not, which is sad, but.
I mean, and the fire tax is, the fire tax isn't that big. It's really the school tax would probably be the most useful one. But I, I agree with you, Catherine, in, in the sense that, yeah, this tilting at windmills is, is not sort of really where I'm at here. And if, if it's something that's impossible to fight, then we just do what we can. But I don't want to go too easily, I'm going to have a good fight.
There's a case right now where the land trust is talking with the town about if the trust were to go through, talking with the town about then assuming ownership of the land. And of course, what that would do would be to take the land off the tax rolls.
Right.
So that's the trade-off, but that would be perhaps the kind of possible gesture that in some cases could make or break the deal for the land trust. I think in this case, that's probably the case.
Yeah. I mean, there's a different thing between putting an easement on a property and sometimes the land trust actually takes over the property, which are, you know, different criteria, and they are much more picky about land that they would actually acquire. Sometimes they'll acquire in order to sell it. If they actually want to acquire it to keep it, it has to often now be fairly special land. So yeah, that's a very different sort of thing than just putting easement on your property. So I, I'm going to refocus on, on the question that Catherine has basically raised, you know, I, I, and language is already in the environmental protection section that says, open space, wetlands provide benefits to the town in terms of clean air and flood mitigation, all this sort of stuff. And they're valuable things and should be maintained. So we have that language in there. And so I think indeed, one argument is, yeah, open space is valuable for all these reasons of rural character. And there were, that's what we're trying to protect and preserve. Versus, as I've said a couple of times already, no, it's agricultural activity per se, which we would have to work on a definition of that is the particular thing or the additional thing that preserves extra particular protection or support. I'm here from Catherine, you know, now I'd rather just go with the open space sort of level, which I think makes it an easier sell for the benefits. But I don't know if it does enough help or not. And the trend would therefore indeed be to a, a town dotted with many homes in the view shed, but at least they wouldn't be hopefully smokestacks and other stuff. And that's a fine vision. I'm not trying to poo-poo it or anything and saying that the realistic point is if you want large tracts of land, they're probably farms. And if it's not farms, it's going to be small.
I want all of it. I don't know if that's a true, I mean, I hear you, but it's not exactly my, I, do I want sustainable agriculture and farm animals everywhere? Yet.
Of course.
Like if that could happen, but that's like, you know, this utopian version of, of what we know about farming. And so I just, I'm not opposed to that. I just think that given the tax code and the benefits that already exist, and I'm trying to really focus on like the comprehensive plan and what kind of development we want and don't want in this town. I, I, I just, that's why I would say that, not that I.
No, no. A, a, as a somewhat small farmer yourself, right? I get it that you're not trying to, to diss the farms. I totally get you there.
So, so am I hearing correctly that we do want to potentially have language, excuse me, in multiple parts of, sorry, not just multiple, each part of the plan that would call out an action step that would involve the town exploring avenues for, you know, maintain the public good or maintain the rural character or maintain the environmental, whatever, through, you know, incentivizing easements or, you know, conservation of ag lands and open space or something like that.
And I'm, I, I agree, but I'm going to delete the word easements. We could mention that as one possible avenue. I think it would be for incentivizing the maintenance of open space. And we can debate, we won't actually specifically label, because agricultural activity is, under our definition, open space. So it could be incentivized, the protection of open spaces in Caroline to help preserve rural character. And that could go in each section because it enhances the ability, it enhances the environment, enhances the rural character. So I might go with language like that. In the meantime, I will reach out to the land trust and try to get their thoughts and take on this. Because again, there's no reason to, there's a reason Danby is exploring it, so there must be some benefit for the town to do it. But also don't want to reinvent the wheel if it could just be, we really shove people towards land trust really hard, right? So. Any other thoughts? Okay. All right, the, okay, so we, we've moved the perception of growth to the end of this meeting, so we're going to move on to the forward preface intro that Catherine sent out. So first, just sort of any general comments on that?
I didn't even grab my power cord, so you'll see me disappear, but I'll be right back.
Do you want me to share my?
I expect everyone's got it, maybe not. We can. Do you want, want Catherine to share her screen with the text on it? Or you could, I guess, for the benefit of the, of those watching.
Sure.
Are you enabled to, Catherine?
Oh, Zoom just kicked me out and I'm back, so what did I miss?
Nothing, other than me asking, are you enabled to share your screen? I can't remember how the meeting is set up.
Yeah, I think so.
You could, you could share.
Tell me if you see a Word document.
Looks like it's, it's, tells me you start sharing.
Do you see a Word document?
Now, now we do.
Yeah.
Alright, so, so that's for the benefit of, of the other attendees. You need to sort of shrink it a little bit because I
I can't see it, but I don't know if I'm on, maybe because I'm on this old computer, no, it's updated Zoom. I can't see it at all.
Okay, that's good, I can read all of it now. Can Tim, can you and Val?
I got it, okay.
Yes.
I can see it, sorry. Go for it.
Okay, so, I mean, presumably you guys have all seen this or read this. Alright, so not hearing any comments. So I, I, I like it. I have a couple of particular, two, two sentences I would like to suggest changes to. And so the question is, how to do that? I have citizens written out. We could essentially look at them and vote on them. We, I could send them to Catherine and see if she likes them. We could discuss them. How do we want to proceed with, you know, because again, the general idea of editing a document in group, but this is actually just two, one small change and one more, even change of two separate sentences. So I just don't know how you guys want to go with looking at that.
Doesn't matter to me, I'm not like wedded to every word, I just wanted to throw it, like, thing to see what we have.
Alright, so.
I think that if, I think that if you, you know, you maybe you could suggest them or call, call attention to the issue and then, you know.
Yeah, so Catherine, if you stop sharing your screen, I'm going to share mine. Alright, so let's see. Alright, so are you guys now seeing my screen?
Yes.
No?
Yeah.
Okay. Alright, so it's just a thought in like prior second paragraph where the attablance I was wanting to change, where it says, is written in service to this purpose offering. I just was suggesting using offers instead. It's, I know mostly a writing style question. But my wife always hits me with the head and says, if you can do it with fewer words, do it that way. It does change the sense a little bit. So again, I'm looking for discussion, we can either just vote it up or down, I don't care which way it goes. But I did want to offer that as a possible suggestion. Or do you want to, I guess, Charles would say we should look at it. Pardon?
I can give you context, which is that the purpose, this purpose is referring to the sentence prior that describes what the purpose of comprehensive planning.
I guess Charles is suggesting we just talk about him a little bit, right, Charles?
Yeah, I mean, it's a starting point because it sounded like you wanted to, because you'd already put them together. I, I, I find I, either of them is unagreeable to either. But yeah, I feel like, if you feel like it's important to reference the purpose in that sentence, then probably keeping the language that references the purpose is important. If you're really trying to tie purpose to the plan, to the goals and actions and bright future, then probably including that word in there makes sense. But if it's, if it's just an odd, if people think it's more obvious that it doesn't need to be brought up in that sentence, then I think using offers is fine.
Yeah, I don't have the strong feeling about this one either. So Val, anything you want to say?
No, I, I think that, I mean, what Catherine said about the context is, is kind of important in that, I mean, it, she discusses the, the purpose of the comprehensive plan, of a comprehensive plan, and then goes, moves to the purpose of this one. In other words, what we're trying to do with it. And I mean, it could be, you know, it could be added at the end of the sentence too, so. But I, I think a reference back to the purpose might.
I should also add.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, the other thing I wanted to mention, which is, I mean, it's weird because there's no kind of cited anywhere in the original comprehensive, but this sentence happens to also be one that is directly from the prior plan. And I was like, do I cite this? And I had to cite it because I don't know who wrote it. So just FYI, there's that little blurb, I mean, I fiddled with it. But if you go from, to the old plan, there's the like, the purpose of comprehensive planning is so and so and so and so. And it was beautiful, so I, it's okay.
I think it's fine, then we'll call that the folk process. Alright, so yeah.
Do you think that's cited though? Because I don't want to say I.
No.
Okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, actually, and since all of our names are going at the bottom of this, we are all equally guilty of plagiarism. But I, I, I think in that case, we'll, I don't know.
Yeah, I mean, it's just an iterative process. I think that, you know, that, there's, there's parts that are de novo in this and parts that are fleshed out and parts that are just revised. And I, I don't think that citing every, that's, yeah, I don't think it'd be helpful.
Okay, so my other thing for, I think we'll probably, you know, as is, but the thing I was wondering about is this part where we get in service again here, the in-service to focusing on da, 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 and then you'll list the different sections. I had two different thoughts. One was just, again, to simplify a little bit and say, you know, of course, the whole documents in service, so we can just say the plan is organized into these three categories. Or if we wanted to do something a little bit more, it was the second choice, which is that sort of referring back to that plan, not, not supposed to be 2016, sorry, it was probably 2006 or something. But basically, to sort of reassure people that all the old loved and true things are still here. You may have to look around for which section they're in, but that basically all those, you know, a lot of those pieces are retained here, but we've just reorganized the layout into these three areas. So those are two possible suggestions. So feedback for Catherine on that.
I like the third approach probably the most in that it just documents kind of our process maybe more. And I don't know if anywhere else in the plan, it's documented like this, I don't think so. So the idea that we took the plan and reorganized it, you know, but that the plan is still there maybe is, is a worthwhile thing to bring up in this section. If somebody only brings the intro, that maybe that they find that reassuring, that it's, again, like it's it's sort of standing on the shoulders of giants, you know, where we're building up from where we started. it's sort of standing on the shoulders of giants, you know, where we're building up from where we started, rather than tearing everything down and starting over and throwing out that work and those, those opinions.
And, and I really like the sentence that follows where Catherine says these categories emerge as consistent themes throughout, you know, all types of community conversations. I think that, you know, that's awesome. That's exactly what happened. Right? So.
Yeah, I go, I, I like the third version here. I think it also essentially reinforces what's said in the appendix that I did. That has to do with the processes and procedures that were essentially encouraging this whole development of a, of a, of a consolidation stuff.
Okay. Alright, I can, I can send that to Catherine. I think. So what else? I gotta find my agenda again now. There we are. That's the wrong agenda. There we are. Okay. So that's that. Ah, so now, so the next thing, I'm going to unshare my screen. If I can figure out. There we go. Okay. So on to discussing the timing and format of sort of how we bring this out to the public. So basically I want to go through some thoughts on timing of finishing the draft. A bit on the format of the draft that's presented to the public. And then thoughts, thoughts about the presentation to the public. And part of that's in the context of whether there can be actual public meetings or whether it's all going to be online. So we have to come with a couple of scenarios. I have learned, I mean, right now, the governor's executive order, which bans public meeting gatherings is still in effect. As far as I can tell, once that is lifted, we are not necessarily obligated to have the hearing in person. Though I certainly recommend that we have at least an in-person component. What I don't want to do is not have someone participate because they were scared about, you know, concerned about their health, which they should be. So I'd want to provide an option for an online participation. And my understanding from talking to Mark is that, that that has always been the case that we could do that. And so now that we're more comfortable, we could do that. I also don't want to force any one of us to be in a room if we feel that is unsafe. So I also pose some questions which make an answer, which is, you know, at some point, who makes the call? Is it up to the state, the county or the town as to, you know, whether we have to meet in person? But I think the answer is we, we never have to. We can always do a video conference as long as the public is able to attend and watch. So with that in line or in, as background. So there's a piece that hasn't been written yet, which is the snapshot of changes. And there's another piece that hasn't been written yet, which is the reflections on the previous plan. And Val has stepped up the plate to write that last, that other part this month. So hopefully we'd have it maybe by the, our meeting at the end of the month. And that's basically looking back at, because the last plan was fairly ambitious in terms of proposing things to happen, happen. And the suggestion was to sort of look back at that and also to sort of mention that things that sort of were left undone. A lot of those have wound up, we sort of grandfathered them into this plan. So originally, I was thinking that was the kickoff section of the plan. What I'm going to throw out there now is I'm thinking now maybe more of that's another appendix. To go either right before or right after the one that talks about the process, that maybe was sort of interrupt the flow of what this plan is. To spend the first part reflecting back on the successes and things left undone by the previous plan. So that's one question for discussion. And then I want to move on to timetable for finishing, which seems to me to be, well, let's get to that. So in terms of the placement of the reflection piece, what do you guys think?
Yeah, I, I agree that it shouldn't go first. I mean, because there are certain things in the new plan that sort of supersede this. And as I said, there are other issues that are extensions of what was brought up then. And there, because it could be highly redundant in certain parts. I don't think that it should be part of the, certainly not near the, near the start. It's almost like it's a synopsis of things. You know, of where, what the plan had proposed, what the new one maybe is proposing, how the differences, where the differences might lie. But then also what's been accomplished.
Right. Right. I mean, we have accomplished some things. So part of the point is to sort of pat ourselves on the back, get people some sense of, we've actually done some stuff, but also to give a sense of things left undone, because that's important too. So that was sort of my thinking. And we, we, we've talked about this piece for a couple of years now. So.
Right. And then one of the reasons this is taking so long for this phase, as we, we've brought up before, is that, is that, that plan actually suggested, it was, well, it was the first one that was ever produced. And as the first one, it suggested certain things that were really getting off the ground for the first time. That it necessitated the production of a whole series of review boards that didn't exist before. So. And that was, that was, that was quite time consuming. So. In other words, it was, there was major earth shaking at the very beginning. So, and I think that that's, that's appropriate.
Yeah. And we benefit a lot from that in the, in the sort of revision process, because all that ground's been broken. No one's, you know, like no one's worried about the foundation being laid, we're just building. So I think it's, it's good. I think it is good. And I think it is probably a, an appendix or at least a, an, an after, like what they call that, a prologue, an epilogue, you know, like you've read, you've read where we see the future is. And you know, now that you're buoyed up by that. Here's what we feel like happened with, you know, the last, the first time, the last time we went through this and how we need to be, you know, work hard to get there, because even though we did a great job, there's lots of stuff that didn't happen. And that's why we stuck a lot of it into this plan too, you know? And it's good. And it also just shows like the, the reason to keep including a lot of the language that was in the original plan is that it's still 100% valid and, and what's the word I'm looking, relevant, is the word I'm looking for. It's just like, you know, so it's, it doubles down on the idea that the process has worked, you know? And it, it should produce, you know, even more confirmation of the process moving forward, which is good because it's still new.
Catherine, anything you want to add?
Nope.
Okay. I mean, I, I will say that when we started this some time ago, I was sort of thinking that we'd be more modest in our ambitions in that first plan. Because I realized how much they wanted to accomplish and how difficult it was to get there. In, I think in the end, we are being at least as ambitious, because there's a lot of things facing the town now. And so we will see. We are asking for a lot.
I think that's, I think that's an important part of the plan, because if we only asked for what, you know, the bear, you know, it's like the whole like, ask for more, because it's always going to be a negotiation, you know, like the negotiation with reality is really what the plan is. It's, it's a plan for how the town negotiates reality, because the town can't control reality. So how do we, how do we plan that negotiation and take into account things that we don't even imagine yet? And so I think that's good. I think, I think that that's where we need to push the envelope is on the things that we've gotten lots of great feedback about. And the things we haven't gotten feedback about, those are things we aren't pushing as hard on, because we haven't. So I think that's, that's a good approach.
Alright, so in terms of, go ahead.
No, it's, it's also a case that, you know, the original plan was, it was easy in the original plan to have bullets as goals and things like that and state them as sentences. And the thing is that it's, it's amazing how much of the actual implementation of the things that have happened have been very incremental and have involved government at almost every scale, you know? And so that's, that's where the thing is, it ends up transcending that, the town, which is a little, which is difficult, but it is good to point out.
Okay. So in terms of finishing verbiage, so I think that we'll have it all by the end of the month. Again, I blocked out a couple of days next week where I can, can finish up the snapshot of changes and get that. So you'll be able to see it before the meeting and knocking the other part done. That means by the end of June, we'll have the text. But that might take one more revision, because then that'll be the first time we're discussing some of that language. So we might need to have a quick meetings, either we can approve changes there or have something in early July that approves final language. That's what I'm thinking, that possible.
Before that draft, before a draft is released to the public, is there going to be any like, editing, meaning we each have our sections that we've written and we each have different styles of writing. We each have different, you know, is there, is there any, is there going to be any attempts to kind of, oh, normalize? If, I'm not sure that it needs that much. I'm just trying to think outside or think sort of out loud right now. Is, you know, it's like making a really good dinner. We might all make dishes, but if they don't work together as well, maybe a little bit of advanced planning, somebody plans the sauce that ties them together, right? Like, so that's, I'm just wondering, are we going to do any of that prior to releasing it to the public? And is that something one of us is going to do? Is that something that we turn to somebody else's view? Or is that something that happens after the public comments? We don't want to get bogged down. I just don't want a bunch of the public comment to be about, let's say tone or something, you know, which is fine if it is. But I'd rather it be about more substantive things than just sort of the, the way it's written. So since I don't know how it was done the first time, just putting it out there is something we should at least think about.
Um, good questions. Tim, I think you were there the first time. I'm guessing that the draft put out was fairly polished the first time. I could be wrong. I'm thinking this draft's going to be less polished in the initial one. We had a discussion a year or two ago, which we said, geez, if we format it in columns and have all the pictures in there, and then that just makes it harder to change the language, because you got to reformat all the goddamn pictures, which is a pain in the button word. But that was another, that was my second question, actually, you guys is, so what form will it be in? So in terms of your question about the editing, I don't know. And I'm looking for comments from Catherine and Val about that. I, and then I don't, I don't know.
I mean, I, I don't remember what happened before, but it's, I mean, my intuition is if there's going to be a public hearing on the text, I guess I'd be a little bit less worried about the formatting to begin with, although it could be. I mean, I, I would recommend doing whatever is going to be the most accessible to the public.
And I guess say, so we have, I think it's, I don't know if it's Don or Rita actually watching. If we're in a room, I would just turn to Don and say, you know, do you have a quick comment on this? Don, if that is you and you want to tell us about the first draft that was released, you can. I guess it looks like, yeah, do you want to talk to us quickly? One minute?
I'd like to, but my computer doesn't usually do well with, with audio. We can hear you. Okay, good. So the, the first one was fairly polished when it went out. And it was in a form that had very little adjustment. Many months shopping it with the community. So what you're doing, what you're talking about right now is taking your draft out to the community. So when it finally came for the town board for public hearings, that was a polished document.
Okay. And you are, we are, you are dropping in and out a bit, but I think I got the gist of what you said, which is that, you know, it, you know, it was somewhat more polished then, but I, and I agree with you that since there's going to be a, a planning board, public hearing, and then eventually a town board public hearing, that was my view, that our first release might be on the rough side. And then again, by the time it's there, actually, it would be certainly a formatted polished document by the time it wound up in the lap of the town board. And that was sort of where I was imagining we were going. And since the Don's giving the thumbs up on that. Okay.
My only comments about, well, I have two comments. One, going back to like the timing, I'm wondering, I don't want to put pressure on anyone, but is it possible to meet before the end of June? Like, I'm just wondering if we should have an extra meeting somewhere to, to get this thing done. Especially as like everything is starting to reopen COVID stuff, everything's totally uncertain. I just, I don't know. I just want to really make sure that this gets done. So I would be okay with having an extra meeting. That's one thing. And then the second piece is, it's very important to me that we work on the accessibility of this in terms of distribution. And I'm happy to take the lead on that. If, you know, there's like a particular person to contact at an agency to make it, you know, large print. If we need to have a reader to have an audio version to give people. But I think we should make it, you know, ADA compliant.
Okay. Excellent. I'm gonna, I'm writing down accessibility here. I want to finish, and I'm writing down editing. I want to finish Charles' question on that. You know, indeed, we sort of pushed the three week schedule because that essentially gave us an extra meeting or two, but your point is well taken. But I would, in this case, Catherine, I think it would work if we had this meeting on the 24th or whatever we said, and then committed to meeting maybe two weeks after that to pass a final draft. Is, is that sort of early July times that meet your concerns over scheduling?
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. I think I do. It does. I just, when I think of like a meeting a month, it doesn't feel like enough, given what's going on with moratorium conversations.
Yeah. So I would go three weeks and then two weeks is what I'm thinking about, but we'll, you know.
Probably to give. Yeah. Yeah. I mean, personally, I tend to be a formalist in almost every way. And I have, I, I think that format does help a lot to unify things. I mean, certainly having a narrator would be good. And the, the original one would structure it a bit so that there was a little like a blurb or something at the beginnings of the sections that, you know, that would give it a, a, a kind of common voice. And, and we can, we can look at that, I suppose, as we get the, the draft together. Be good to get Morgan Freeman to do that.
I mean, my actually, so along to Charles' question about editing, if we did, I would suggest farming it out to a pro. To get this one that lived in town, it was wanting to give the town a break on costs, because I think all of us are maybe a little bit too close to it. And it would be, if we were to do editing, it should be as we've written it, which is fine with me. That's actually what I was thinking. Or if it was going to be done some other way, that we need a fresh pair of eyes that is actually looking at saying, oh, this isn't clear enough here. Try working it this way, or the tone changes. And, you know, I mean, I would just want someone else doing that. So it wasn't one of us in that role. And I'm okay either way. And maybe that's what happens after the first set of public hearings. But hearing Val, maybe that should happen before the public hearing. So. Do we get an editor?
I don't know if it's going to be necessary yet. So we can, we can see what we do. I mean, there's, I think that what Catherine brings up about the ADA compliant situation is, is, is tricky, because it's, and necessary, and there's going to have to be somebody who's an expert at that. You know, because every kind of graphic has to be, have a, an explanatory version of it. And many, and many of the graphics that we have, the, the charts and things may be quite important. You know, to the, to the text itself and the arguments that are being made. So, so there's probably going to be somebody coming in at some point who does that.
So Catherine, what I heard you say is you were willing to sort of maybe track down who that person or office would be that could help with that?
Yeah. I mean, my first move will just be like I, in my work, interact with, you know, disability services at Cornell all the time. So I, my, my first call will just be to the director of SDS and say like, what do we do about town documents? I've done a quick search about it. And there's not, like, there's a lot about web, like stuff that's on websites. And you can actually be sued for not having your town websites be compliant.
That's why, that's why Cornell is like, spending a lot of money right now becoming compliant. It's a big deal. So.
So how that translates to like document, I don't really know yet, but I'd be really happy to look into it. It seems a social justice issue. Yeah.
I like that. I think that's wonderful. So then, you know, in a non-COVID-19 world, what has often happened in, in town, important town documents, processes, laws, whatever, is that the, the documents released, but then also there's a couple of public information meetings, not a hearing, but you know, where we are there to explain a bit the document, make some points about it. It's not a time for public feedback on the document. It's a time for the public to learn about the document, not just by reading it, but be able, but be able to interact with the ones that created it. And after a couple of those, and again, one would move those around the town to make it accessible for everybody. Then there would be a little bit of time and then the public hearing or hearings. One is required by us. Again, in an ideal world, I would have said we should do two, you know, one in Brookendale and one down in, you know, Speedsville or something like, like we did in the past. I don't know it, you know, if we finish text in early July and it's going through ADA compliance and all this other stuff. Maybe by end of July, we have a document that's done. Information meetings could be end of July, early August and public hearings, say by mid-August. That's about as ambitious a schedule as I can think we could meet. I don't know if we'll be able to have in-person meetings in August. I would. You know.
I mean, speaking for myself, I wouldn't be at them. So, you know, I think we still need to plan for, you know, a completely remote experience. you know, a completely remote experience for anyone that doesn't want to be physically present with a bunch of other people. Yeah.
And remember, we had our best attendance at one of these virtual, our first virtual meeting.
Yep.
I mean, it was really great. And, uh, you know, there, because there is a different kind of accessibility to this that, um, I, that's where it would be good to know what it means. I don't know if all sorts of information sessions and public meetings are, are necessary first. I, I do know though, it's important to be able to make physical copies available uh, for people in a whole lot of places in a market.
But, but that will be an issue because, I mean, you can, well, you do it though. You print them, you say they're in the sealed box for three days before anyone else can touch them, right? I mean, there was issues with, with wanting to make sure those copies are, are physically safe for people. Um, I was going to think, oh, well, while we had a lot of people at that meeting a couple of times ago, um, that doesn't necessarily mean that it's easy for everyone to do that. I mean, it may skew who is attending the meeting. Now, again, a physical meeting may have a, a different kind of skew to it. So I think we may have to provide both options, but let's say you're out in some rural part of the town that doesn't have very good internet access. You're not going to be participating in this. Um, and so I think that we need to think about that hard, but that decision doesn't have to be made till we know better about what's going on. Uh, I am reluctant to hold in-person meetings because of, um, health concerns, but I am wanting to hold them because of, uh, uh, opportunities for, for public input. And so we'll have to sort of see where things look like.
Yeah. I mean, there might be a way to thread the needle where there are places that are public places that people can go to, to both listen and submit feedback to. So there could be a screen with a Zoom.
Yeah, that, that's my guess. We'll do a combined.
At the fire department.
Yeah.
Or, you know, at the community center and maybe if any of you want to be physically present, you could, but if you don't, you just zoom in the way you would normally. And so there is, I mean, like ultimately, if people are able to get to any of those places, they could, if they wanted to get somewhere where there's internet. Just like if, you know, we, uh, did or didn't want to be on the internet when we went to these meetings, when these meetings happen, we could choose to be there in person if there's a venue and if we're allowed to have them. But it is a, it is a thing that, yeah, it probably makes sense to look at much more closer to the time because the, you can still only have 10 people in a room or something, you know.
Do we include the option of telephone?
Uh, this Zoom meeting has the option of calling in on a regular road, you know, like a plain old non-dumb phone.
Yeah.
I mean, I think that, I mean, we had to do that this afternoon for, uh, my wife had a really important meeting and our internet wiring, everything just fell down and stuff. And it was, um, and she did it with a phone, with the, uh, you know, just the usual landline phone. Which is sort of the old fashioned way.
Yeah. I'm not familiar with the box that someone described, the silver box or something. Is the, is the, is there an issue with a draft? Like if you had a draft of a, of the comp plan, could it be locate like?
I think Bill was talking about the actual physical sanitation of that document so that more than one person might look at it and be, you know, not potentially infecting themselves from the person that coughed on it right before they looked at it. I think that's what Bill was.
Yeah. Or, or let's say we have a bunch of copies available for distribution at the town hall. Um, they have to be kept safe. And I think that, you know, town hall may have procedures now for this, but we'd have, you know, we'd have to come somewhere.
What do you mean?
From the person coughing at it, like the, let's, let's say the town clerk happens to have COVID but doesn't know it, and is coughing on her hands and handing document to people in the town, right? I mean, this is a possible scenario, unlikely, but I'm just saying we have to face those issues. If we're going to distribute a physical document, we should have some protocol in place so that we're sure that that document is safe to be giving people in terms of health safety.
For jurors.
I think this is something that, that will just end up being dictated by town and county policy.
Right.
That we're.
That's what I was wondering who, where, what level it. For the meeting itself, I think we are free as to, to do a mixed meeting. If we, if we, if, if public meetings are allowed, we can have an in-person part of it, but we're not. Yeah. I think we can always have a video part of it is my now understanding of, of state and law. And so I think we'll definitely do that. And the real question is whether there is any kind of in-person component to it. That will be dictated by the overall, you know, health protocol at the time that we do this, which again is looking at, at I think August is what it sounds like. Um, Val raised a question. I don't know if information meetings are necessary, so I want to throw that out there. Um, there's often debate about that. Um, I would lean towards it. There may not be high attendance. It could, I think that one particular probably be just a, an online thing, uh, might be just a, a screen show with like a bunch of slides that we've come up with to, to run through it. Uh, it's at least an example of public outreach that I think is valuable to have. So I'm in favor of it, but it does take time, but isn't, but all of us have to be at that. All of us should be at the public hearings or this may, this can, but all of us don't have to do the public information session. And if it's just me, that's fine, you know, too. But I think it's a good gesture to try to do that as long as it doesn't slow down the whole process. That's my take on it. But again, I'm, you know, it's a committee. So what do you guys think?
I think public information things will, will slow down the process, but it would be good to have, to, as you say, to have a, try to have one at least. You know, just to, uh, it, people have to be able to know what it is in order to discuss it. And theoretically, we want people to digest it a bit more than just having it presented to them.
Yes. I think the messaging like this isn't, I mean, if it's not a place for them to give feedback on it, is it a place for them to ask questions about it, for example?
Yeah. I think if, if something's not clear to them, for example, they should be able to ask the question. But it's not a time for a long harangue of why didn't you guys do X?
Right. I mean, I'm certainly open to doing public information sessions. Um, I think we would just need to be really clear and develop a plan for what it is we would even be presenting. Cause I, you know, we're not going to stand up and read the thing.
No, no, no. So I'm thinking of, of, of a PowerPoint slideshow with a limited number of slides that have bullet points or something, right?
Right.
I'm wondering if a compromise would be to have one information session then followed by the public hearing, understanding that once it's submitted to the town board, there will also be public hearings.
Um, I'm a little confused about what you said. You mean both in the same day? We say one.
No, 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 but instead of having, say, two public hearings and or two, two information sessions. I'm just trying to keep the wheel rolling a little bit.
Right. And, and that's, is fine though. Again, I wouldn't necessarily even say the public hearing. I mean, it could be, there's one on Tuesday night and one on Wednesday night, right? Again, if we were in person, we'd be shoveling different sides of town. Uh, I do not want multiple meetings to take like a couple of weeks in between them. I mean, public information should be a week or so before a public hearing. Yes. Cause people just have time to reflect on that information. But if you have two public information meetings, they ought to be back to back. You know, a Tuesday night and a Thursday nights, the people who have conflict can get to one or the other, or something like that, or just one.
Just one consideration that's come up in the past is probably to try to avoid say a public hearing the first couple of weeks of August, which is, it might be less the case this year, but that's a very heavy vacation time and our town has had a tremendous habit of scheduling public hearings at that time for the years.
Okay. And I, uh, yeah, my guess is we're probably mid-August realistically, but I'm not sure. I mean, is mid-August okay? Like, or should we do end of August? I just don't think we can do it end of July. I don't think, we won't be ready. I don't think.
Right. Yeah. I just would just recommend not the first week of August, for example, or the first couple of weeks. But this year, that should just be irrelevant anyway.
Well, except that everything will be open by August, right?
If, if we're judging from the demonstrations, everything is already open.
All right. So that does segue into the question that Charles brought up in terms of, of your timing. Uh, Charles, so I mean, if we are doing public hearings and stuff in sometime in August, do you feel comfortable sticking on to that time, particularly with, I think that much of the rest of the time, it wouldn't be a big demand on?
Yeah, I totally think so. Yeah. I didn't get a chance to respond to the emails, but I thought that was a really reasonable um, compromise and midway. And it's not, and it's, because it's not, it's not that I, I just really don't have as much time as I thought I would when we started this, and, and it's only gotten worse since COVID started and juggling kids and jobs. And now no school, no camps in the summer is only going to make that more complicated. So it's just, I, I feel like in order to give my brain, you know, and motivation to the, to the work, just haven't, haven't had the time. So I think it's totally reasonable. Um, so let's just focus on that for now. And if things pop up, we'll, we'll readdress it maybe later this summer. But I, you know, I, I want to see this get done as well, which is why I'm, you know, honestly feel flexible about it. It's not like an ultimatum. It's more of just like, I need to figure out an exit strategy so I can just like breathe a little bit, I think. So, um, so I think, yeah, focus on getting to August with plan and the hearing prior to submitting it to the town board, and then we'll go from there.
But you could also start a, a kind of rolling search. I mean, not necessarily even for your position, because we still have a fifth position that
Right.
Hasn't been filled yet. So we should, we should really.
But I, but I think it towards the end of the summer, if one thing people are doing stuff now, but I don't want to derail uh, our process by, by.
And the town board, the town board will do that. I mean.
Yeah, yeah. We don't, other than, you know, get, if anyone here knows someone, that, that's sort of our role. But the town board really is supposed to put up the call and interview the candidates and, and do all that. Um, but, but Charles, I do very much appreciate that because what I want is your brain power when we hear the feedback. And then when it comes to making edits, if you want to get out of here, that's fine. So.
I'm psyched to play a role in it. I mean, that's, that's why I got involved in the first place. And it's exciting to be helping push this next chapter of the town's plan forwards. I really like what's been achieved. You know, it's part of why I like living here, you know, is what was achieved by the first one. Um, you know, really, I think affects my quality of life. So that's why it's not, it's not like a huge deal. It's just more of like, I just want to like, keep that conversation going because I don't also want to misrepresent where, you know, the other part of what I'm feeling is I want to be a part of this, but I have to take care of all this. So as long as we're all sort of like there, it's not, not like I, I want you to feel like, oh, you know, thank you so much. No, just like, let's just plan on, that's the plan, and we'll just focus on getting work done. And if something big changes, let's just bring it up again, but that'll be our plan from now until go mid, late August, and then we can touch base then.
Okay, great. Okay. I have two questions that I asked.
Unrelated.
Yeah.
Just in terms of August, um, and like, again, I'm like just one small part of this thing, but I am gone, I'm supposed to be gone. Um, between like the, the last week of August into the first week of September. Um, so again, I don't like, I don't think I'm like so important that this shouldn't go on. But just like, just the N is an FYI, like that whole chunk of August 21st to September 7th.
Good luck.
Did you really feel that's going to happen?
Hopefully.
Suppose, yeah, well, we're, it's our honeymoon that's been planned for like four years. So, um, we shall see. But evidently it's still.
If you're waiting four years, I mean, what's the big deal if delaying it one more year so you can be here for the cop plan?
Just a month. I mean, just a month.
I know. Really? Where's my dedication to the town? Come on.
Come on.
I hope you're not going to Wuhan.
No.
All right. Uh, I just, ooh, ooh, yeah, we definitely do it in the summer.
They're evidently testing every person upon entry to the country. So that's the only reason why it's still on, but.
Awesome. Hold your breath on the plane. I heard that that helped. Way. Come on.
Yeah. But you can visit Iceland. They're going to test you when you get there, and then you have two weeks of quarantine, and then you can go see the country.
There you go. That sounds fun.
I'll be so sad. I'll be so sad to get stuck there. Anyway, I'm happy to do my part to push it forward, I guess is what I'm saying. If it needs to like, be like a early August, like I will do whatever I can.
Well, I'm pretty sure you could zoom in from Iceland. They have good internet there.
Yeah. All right. Uh, I have just two questions for you guys, and then I will conclude the meeting. Uh, specific question on the snapshot of whatever. And that's the question. Should we call it snapshot of growth or snapshot of changes? Growth was taken from a document that was prepared for Newfield. Um, and you know, yeah, there is some growth, but if I'm talking about declines in agricultural acreage, well, that, everything's not growth. So I started to think that changes was a better word.
Yeah, I, I think so too.
Yeah, I'd agree.
Because growth is a little too chamber of commercey.
And it's just like, you don't know what's growing. You know, it could be cancer. So.
All right. And the other question, a bit more substantial, has to do with this map. We hadn't debated on, you know, a month or more ago. So it shows all the new house, it shows all the housing in town, right? Black dots for old houses, red dots for houses in the last 15 years. And then some triangles or whatever, again, the shape now for, um, businesses and black ones for old ones. And then red ones for the few new commercial properties. Um, part of the interest, then again, the interest, the idea for the map came from, um, George France, but uh, to see sort of what's happening. I think it's a valuable map to have. But I'm realizing there are some, some issues in particular in terms of commercial properties. As we discussed, that not everything that's commercial is necessarily listed as commercial in the assessment database, which is a bit of an oddity. Um, and I looked at something like the Carson Equipment Property, which is listed as a residential property. But if you go to its information, there's a separate tab under commercial, because I think they have some commercial buildings there. And if you look at the age, things look old, but I'm pretty sure that Carson Equipment wasn't at that location in the early 2000s. So really that's a new commercial and in terms of land use, in terms of impact on the visual appearance and everything else in the town. That's a new thing that ought to be in a red color, not a black color. So there may be things like that slipping through, and I was wondering if we should sort of try to track down such things. We got the whole low chop, low chop thing. I mean, they have a commercial structure too. The barn behind their place is a commercial structure. I don't, I mean, they're kind of more residential, obviously. I don't want to be biased here, but I'm, you know, there's a big difference between a bunch of hunk and big equipment in a yard and a little barn behind your house. So I want that the point of that map in part that is just not to showing where things are going on, but I think to highlight that while there are some commercial changes, the challenges facing Carolina are primarily residential growth challenges. And that's visible in the map. So I guess that's my question of how do we make that map more valid, which I think basically is calling a business like Carson, saying, when did you open here? Um, and if so, is that what we should do?
I don't think that we can ever achieve, you know, a hundred percent reliability, especially with those kinds of things. I mean, I think that you've already done a pretty major job in getting it as accurate as, as one could with the data that we have. And, and you've gone beyond the, the standard data that was presented. Um, and, and, and it's so tricky to decide what is, you know, because there's so many so much business use of homes also, you know, that occurs anyway. And what, it becomes a slippery slope. I think it's good to just have this impression of it.
So that's why I tried to, so I, good point. Because again, it is definitely not a map of all the businesses in town. But it's supposed to be perhaps a map of, um, land use in the town. Again, it's one thing if you're running a computer fixed shop from inside your living room, right? That, that doesn't impact the lawn, other than having a little sign. But if you are running a commercial establishment that has a lot of traffic in and out, or that has a big equipment in the yard, that impacts land, usual land appearance. And so that's what it's supposed to be a map of in some sense.
Is there any business other than Carson that you're, that were, that's in question here?
I don't know. Cause the thing is, I don't know what I don't know. Um, again, I brought up the question of the greenhouse, uh, places way out on 79. Now, they are an old business because they were a set of greenhouses. They've been repurposed now. I think they're growing hemp. If I, if they're, that's what they said on the website. I don't know if they're really in business still this year. They were last year growing hemp. Uh, so that turns up as an old business because again, it's still the same property. I guess the related question is, so a place like Celebrations, which was established before my time window, but they've added a building or two. I, I, is it enough that that should be, you know, is expansion? I was, I was ignoring expansion, saying, okay, that's not really changing the land use. It was already a commercial property, already had structures there. But then we get that slippery slope of, well, but if someone makes like a huge new building, should that be represented in some way? So that's.
Yeah.
But Kevin, I, did you, I don't know what I don't know.
It comes, it comes, it starts to become too, to me, and this is just, I'm not saying this has to be the way we go, but like, it starts to become just like us making a bunch of decisions about what to include and what not to include, you know? When I think about just, if I go for a five mile run around here, there's a number of businesses, smaller and large. There's businesses that have built a big shed that whether or not it's related to the business, it's not really clear. But you see the vehicles from the business sometimes over there. You know, I mean, like, I, I feel like it'd be hard to create an unbiased baseline that we'd be trying to show something with. You know, and that's, and that's just my feeling on it. I mean, like, yeah, there's a couple of things out there on 79 that are really noticeable. But, you know, if there's a kennel, let's say, out here, and there's like every morning and every afternoon, there's 15 to 25 cars that are going to be coming down that road and picking up their animals and turning around and leaving, and you know, like, how's that compared to the number of cars that go in?
Theoretically, digging.
You know, I don't know, but I'm just saying, it's, we're starting to make these decisions about, you know, well, this is the important thing we should pay attention to if we're talking about commercial, and I don't think that that's where we're at, you know, and we don't have like a protocol for that, we don't, and I feel like it's kind of like far outside the mandate relative to the comprehensive plan. I think that within the comprehensive plan, like we've talked about, having essentially a a more, a more systematic survey of businesses and commercial ventures in the town to form the basis of a strategy to do X, Y, or Z is a really good next step. But, but to not have it be systematic, I think, puts whatever we're trying to say or show, it puts it really at risk of just, you know, someone being like, oh, you just cherry picked all those.
Right, that is exactly what I'm concerned about.
You know, and I don't want.
Oh, I, yeah, I have to, I'm going to have to go, but I would say that in, like, the specific example you had, that if Celebrations does, and a large additional buildings, if it's the same business, which is, you know, what they do, that shouldn't matter. If it's another business, that's things like the storage unit things that are also appearing all over the landscape, then, then I think it's a different business, and it probably does warrant just some sort of recognition. Also, these things are so.
I just, we, we have what, what businesses and what additions and what projects are subjects and site plans and subdivision review, which is like already existing.
Right, so we should know those things.
Right, I mean, I'm agreeing with you, I just, I just don't, I don't think this is in our purview, I think, you know, to be like, oh, well, like, we really like, you know, Celebrations, they're cool, so, like, they can do whatever they want, because they painted it a nice green color, and then, like, Carson's got a bunch of like buses running 18 hours a day, and we don't like that, so we're, like, I just, and I don't like that, but I don't, there's nothing like to do about that.
Right, so, so, yeah, so that is nowhere near where this map is going, so I, I mean, the point is the map's supposed to represent in some way, a commercial land use. That was the idea behind the Master Show, residential land use and commercial land use, and some sense of, you know, new and old, because if they were like, you know, 10 different red triangles as new business along Route 79, that would be quite relevant to the picture of what's going on in town compared to being, as it is now, maybe one.
I agree, but what I'm picking up on is you saying that in order to, you know, fill out this map, you're going to need to call Carson up and ask him what year he went into business, which I think is just like not something I want to get involved in.
We could also put a disclaimer in there and say that, you know, if you have information that, you know, for correcting it or whatever, you know, because we're not, none of these things are definitive maps or diagrams. I think that this map is extremely helpful in terms of also telling about residential development here, so.
I agree, and that's why I asked, is there something else that's sticking in your mind other than Carson, you know, just as an example, like, there's the extreme motorsports place that now is a car dealership, but like, it still looks, like, still looks about the same.
Well, they're on there, because, because, because they were founded in the time window, so they're on there as a red triangle, and that, that's so we know about them, because they are a commercial property. What I don't know is things I don't know, like I say, I don't necessarily drive down Old 76th Road all that time, maybe there's been something there that I don't know about, I don't think so. So maybe the map is good enough as it, which is really the question I was raising, is seriously, what we got, what we got? Or should we fight harder to try to, you know, make sure we don't get, you know, think about someone said, how come you didn't do X?
Right. And let them say that then. Then we'll think about it. But anyway, in the meantime.
I'm, I'm, I'm cool with that. We're going to leave it as is, I think, that, that's the decision.
I think so.
You're shaking your head.
Yeah, no, agree, I just.
Okay, okay.
I thought we like did this over email, so I'm just a little bit like.
Oh, because I thought harder about it and was wondering that it wasn't, it seemed to be there was a, not the interpretation of what it was you're trying to show, what you guys are talking about, didn't seem to match what I had in mind for what the map was trying to show, and that's why I just wanted to bring that question up, is if this is what the intent of the map is, are we still okay with it the way it is? And what I'm hearing from everybody is, yes, so, got it?
It's showing more than one thing, two.
Yeah, yeah, no, no, that was one aspect of it.
Right.
So. Sorry to rehash stuff. Gets me to talk to my wife all the time.
You guys on June 24th.
Yep. So long.
Okay.
Bye.